Okay, at this time I'll call the September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five Regular Council Meeting to order. Please rise for the press.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of the supplemental payment summary under the consent agenda as item G.
Second.
Got motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Presentations, Nook County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Scott Wicklin. I'm a sergeant with our patrol division. In the month of August, the sheriff's office responded to a total of four hundred and thirteen calls for service, the lowest total since April of this year. Deputies handled ten theft calls and two assaults. We did not take a report on any type of burglary or damage to property. Deputies made a total of twenty-nine arrests from miscellaneous offenses. With the hundred and sixty-seven traffic stops were conducted, resulting in forty-three citations. Notable calls our deputies have handled the past month include a drug arrest on August twelfth. At six twenty-four P.M., Deputy Kirshin stopped the vehicle for driving conduct in the twenty-one seven-hundred block of Highway sixty-five. There is initial contact with the driver. Deputy Kirshin observed indications of impairment and saw a glass pipe and ladder, chimney leaves of smoke, methamphetamine, sitting in plain view of the front seat. Deputy Kirshin had the driver exit the vehicle and asked him to perform standard field sobriety tests. The driver performed the test as asked but ultimately failed and was placed under arrest for driving under the influence of a controlled substance. On a search of the interior of the vehicles, deputies located a large amount of cash and approximately a hundred and eighty-one grams of suspected narcotics. The driver was transported to the hospital where a warrant was drafted and a blood sample obtained. Driver was later booked at the jail for DWI and possession of controlled substance. The cash narcotics are placed in evidence for further testing and prosecution. Traffic arrest on August seventeenth this year at nine forty-one P.M., Deputy Kirshin again stopped the vehicle in the thirteen-hundred block of Hundred and Eighty-seventh Lane for an equipment violation. Deputy Kirshin spoke with the driver, learned that driver's license was canceled. Deputy Kirshin arrested the driver and transferred him to jail, was booked on a gross misdemeanor violation. The vehicles, the driver's vehicles left at the stop location and was driven from the scene by owner's friend. Also, a DWI on August twenty-first at eleven twenty-eight, twenty-eight P.M., Deputy Martinez received the call of an impaired driver traveling south on Highway sixty-five from Two Hundred and Forty-Fifth Avenue. As he arrived in the area, Deputy Martinez noted that the vehicle was being stopped by another deputy who had been close by when the call was dispatched. Deputy Martinez spoke to the driver, smelled an alcoholic beverage, and was exhibiting signs of impairment. Using interpreter, Deputy Martinez asked the driver to step out and perform standard field sobriety tests. Deputy Martinez worked with interpreter through the phone to explain and demonstrate the test. She wanted the driver to perform. Driver ultimately failed the test and blew an initial PBT of a point two-six-six. The driver was arrested and transported to the sheriff's office where he provided a breath sample, resulted in the final test of a point two-three BAC. The driver was later booked in the jail for gross misdemeanor DWI and ignition interlock violation. As we conclude the summer, our total call volume is three thousand three hundred and thirty-five calls for this year, which is slightly above the three thousand three hundred and eleven calls that we had responded to last year at this time. Our trends remain relatively consistent. We've seen a decrease in assaults this year but an increase in theft-related incidents. Damage to property calls are down, crash with injuries are also down, which is nice to see. Also tomorrow night, Tuesday, the twenty-third, from four P.M. to seven P.M. is our annual open house event at the sheriff's office main campus in Andover. All are welcome to come and say hello. We have a number of displays and fun activities planned for visitors. It's really fun for the kids, too. Thank you for the opportunity. Any questions for me?
I actually do have a question. Do you guys get very many resisting arrests? Or is that a rarity around here?
We don't get very many. Are you talking specifically to East Bethel or all the contracts we work?
Uh, the Anoka County, I think.
All the contracts we work. We have a really good relationship with the people we serve, and we approach people with a lot of respect, so we don't have a lot of resisting calls up here. The southern cities get a lot more of that up here. We've been pretty lucky on that. It happens from time to time, but it's not very common.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you. Player report.
Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me. For this month, our call volume is significantly less than it was two months ago. If you remember, we were just over a hundred calls for the month. This month we did sixty-four. Forty-one of them were radical, eleven of them were the good intent, and then the rest of them are kind of sprinkled in there. One notable, we did have mutual aid fire over in Oak Grove. We've actually had two in the past couple of weeks where we've been able to assist Oak Grove on a structured fire at various times, and we've had good attendance for those calls and been able to help. Couple of the other things that we have going on tonight, we have auto extrication training. We have multiple reps with new extrication tools that are allowing us to use them and see how they operate and see if there would ever be a fit here in East Bethel for upgrading our tools to battery-operated versus a gas power unit with a small engine on it. Notable things that we have coming up, we have our open house on October sixth from seven, sorry, from five until seven-thirty in the evening. It is a Monday night. We'll have a whole bunch of things going on. I know it's still being set up. Deputy Chief Udin is putting that together and doing a good job. I'm looking forward to being part of my first open house here in East Bethel.
And that's at Fire Station One, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions for Chief?
All right.
How's everything looking for a grass or wildfires with today's start of fall, the one, the equinox is one of the things? So we're looking at fall colors and things drying out. Is there any indication of any dangers?
Not that I've seen as of yet. Obviously, we'll continue to monitor that situation. Our grass rigs are always ready to go, and I know DNR will start to ramp up their availability with more people as fire season, not grass fire season, is upon us.
What are the regulations on burning leaves?
I would have to look into that. I am not positive what the city's stance is on that. I know most is clean, dry wood, grass clippings, and that stuff usually are not to be burned, but I would have to, I would have to defer that question. I apologize.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Against the law.
That's okay.
State wise.
You know, while we're talking about open burning, you know, a rec fire is fine. That's defined as three by three with flames no higher than three feet. So three feet by three feet with flames no higher than three feet. Anything above that would require a burn permit, and those can be obtained here at City Hall. And then the size is on that, but it can be a bigger pile, but there are extinguishment requirements for that as well.
All right. Look forward to the open house.
Be a good time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Jacob, you're not getting me that form deal.
Next, we're gonna move into the potentially dangerous dog hearing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we have this evening a potentially dangerous dog hearing. We'll have a public hearing for this, but wanted to just kind of give a little background on it. This is a dog incident that occurred on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. The Anoka County Sheriff's Office reported that two dogs were involved in this and that the neighbor on the property, I'm guessing next door, found these dogs to be potentially problematic, believes that these, the incident was unprovoked, it was off the owner's property, and that the dogs were not under the control of the owner, as reported and cited by the investigating deputy. And essentially what happens is if, if one person wants to have a hearing on this, we would then schedule this hearing, which we are doing here this evening. And so essentially, just a potentially dangerous dog means any dog that when unprovoked inflicts bites on a human or domestic animal on public or private property, when unprovoked chases or approaches a person, includes a person on a bicycle, upon the streets, sidewalks, or any public or private property other than the dog's owner's property, in apparent attitude of attack, or has a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked, causing injury or otherwise threatening the safety of humans or domestic animals. The owner was submitted a request to appeal this decision, and I believe they are here this evening. And essentially, there's several options here that the code allows for. First of all, to conduct a hearing, allow the owner to present reasons why the potentially dangerous dog determination should be removed. If the potentially dangerous dog determination is sustained, then you, the options are to one, dispose of the animal, or two, to allow the owners to keep the animal with restrictions. And if the potentially dangerous dog determination is not sustained, making a determination that the animal is to be released without further action from or by the City Council. So essentially, after the hearing, you guys will have an opportunity to talk this through and determine if you feel that the dog is potentially dangerous, or to determine that it is dangerous. And if you decide that it is a dangerous dog, at that point, the owner would provide and maintain a proper, a couple of different options that you could impose upon the owner. One would be that the owner would provide and maintain a proper enclosure for the dog, that the owner must post the front and rear of the premises with clearly visible warning signs, including a warning symbol, copy of which will be furnished by the city to inform children that there is a potentially dangerous dog on the property. And that an easily identifiable standardized tag identifying the dog as potentially dangerous and contained, containing the uniformed dangerous dog symbol must be affixed to the dog's collar at all times. This is all according to Minnesota state law. And that the owner provides and shows proof of annual, annually of public liability insurance paid in full and the minimum of three hundred thousand dollars. The insurance must insure the owner for any personal injuries inflicted by the potentially dangerous dog. Then they show a fourteen days to show proof of that. And then there is essentially seizure options and subsequent offenses that if the dog does this again, there is a registration fee. They are required to pay an annual registration fee to the city of two hundred and fifty dollars in addition to any regular dog license fees and reasonable fee to cover the city's administration costs within fourteen days of declaration, and again, an annual anniversary dates. If the dog has been impounded, the fee must be paid prior to the dog's release. The animal control authority shall issue a certi, certificate of registration to the owner of the potentially dangerous dog if the owner presents sufficient evidence of compliance with the requirements of this section of the code. So essentially, we'd ask you to conduct a public hearing here from both sides. I believe they're both here, and then make a determination at that point.
Okay, at this time I'll open the hearing. Either one of you want to come up first? State your name and address.
Hello, my name is Adam Inglesmeyer. My address is one nine five eight fourth Third Street. I've been there for twelve years. So we're talking about the dogs today. I've had these two dogs for a while now. These are four or five years old. There is a six-foot fence around the outside of my yard, and I have pictures of that. We let them in and out of the back door, which is completely fenced in. Our whole three-quarters of our backyard is fenced in, and I do not believe that this was our dogs. These neighbors have been there for at least eight years. They know the dogs are, they know my dogs, and they have had disagreements with me in the past. I don't know without evidence these are my dogs, that I would say that they did it. But hearing this, I decided to walk over there and ask if everybody is okay, offered to pay the vet bills, because this sucks, I wouldn't want anybody to go through this. And then in the backyard, we ended up setting up some line that we've been tying them off in the backyard even though it's fenced in. And we have plans, in fact, we have bought a closed-in kennel that has an enclosed top is what our plan is going on, just so that there's no ambiguity in the situation. Any comments or questions?
Are your dogs up to date on rabies and everything?
Yes. I have all the paperwork here if you'd like it.
Yeah, well, we'll take a look at it. Has there been any evidence or altercations of this type in the past with the dogs?
Their dog, a couple of years ago, came into our yard, dug under the fence, and these two dogs held it down, but there was no injury from that case.
When, when the deputy came over after this incident, where, where, where were your dogs?
Inside.
So were they inside the entire time that?
Uh, no, they were, I was actually taking a nap. I was, I just got out of surgery, like, I think this is my ninth week out of surgery for shoulder injury from work, and I was taking a nap after work. So my wife called me and said, hey, the police said that the neighbor's dog got mauled by our dogs. And it was like, where are they? And she's like, I let them out the backyard, inside the enclosed fence, and she let them in the same door. And then I instantly watched the, walked the perimeter to see if they dug around, and there was no spot that they could have gotten out. So they would have to go over, it's their German Shepherds, it's a possibility, which is why I took the preventive actions later.
Okay. Did you want to pass some papers around?
Yeah.
So you, you say you've been here four years?
Twelve.
Or twelve years you've lived here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've always had a dog, at least one.
So just a quick question. Mr. Mayor and Council, it says you were issued a citation for a dog at large for the police report?
Yes.
So meaning that the dog wasn't in the fenced area then?
To our knowledge, it was there. We paid it because I just want to get it over with. Like, I don't see anything that we did wrong, and we're taking more precautions in hope that what everybody thinks happened doesn't happen again.
So you didn't question the at-large citation if your dog was fenced in the whole time?
Well, there's, there's dogs in the neighborhood all the time. And I just, I didn't want to go through the court thing. It was during the day. I would have lost three hundred dollars just going to work instead of paying the two hundred dollar fine.
No, not the fine part of it, but the issue of the citation was for the dog outside of the fenced area, is that correct?
But there's no proof that our dogs were outside the fence.
Yep.
This is my wife, Crystal Riley.
So when?
Use the mic, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
When the officer came or called, he said that our neighbors had video proof, or, and I was like, because I asked, I was like, did they just say it happened, or is there proof? And he said, there is proof that it happened. And so I was like, okay, well, if there's proof, we need to pay, and then we need to, you know, do all that. But they said the proof would be here as well.
Okay. I know the council was sent other information on this because it would be, wasn't public information to send out.
Yeah, I'm having, when he went back to confront the dogs and that, it doesn't really say he, who he ID'd the dogs as, even though he said he went to the neighbors. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out if they have the video of the two dogs, which we have nothing. I mean, we've just got the injuries to the dog, but that's where I'm trying to look at this police report, and it's, it, he says he found two large dogs. It really doesn't mention, well, I guess it does, it says it ran away from the neighbors, to the neighbor's house, so.
Is the other person here?
No.
Because I did speak to the other person, and they, and I don't know, can I bring up what they said to me?
I would wait till after we hear the initial report here and we get into the council Any more questions towards?
Just want to make sure I know everything in here. You have a fenced-in yard totally around, correct?
Yep.
You offered to pay vet bills.
I did end up paying the vet bills.
You did pay them, okay. You're currently putting them on a line in your backyard that we saw here. You purchased, from what the paperwork looks like, an enclosed kennel with top.
Correct.
They're up to date on rabies?
Yep.
Correct? Are they registered with the city yet?
They do not have licenses with the city, but we're not enforcing that.
Well, it's free, it's just, I'm just asking. Do you have any other animals?
Not at the moment.
That's all I need to know, thanks.
Grab that on the wheel.
Any other questions?
Not at this time. I might have a question in a minute, but.
At this time, we're gonna close the hearing part of it and go into council's discussion. All right, I guess the first thing we need to discuss is this, we're gonna deem it as a potentially dangerous dog.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, you would deem it as a dangerous dog. A potentially dangerous means that we're having a hearing to determine if it's going to be dangerous. If it is, as stated, there's options for that. If there isn't enough evidence to prove, then this would just be dismissed.
So do you want to motion? I'm gonna make a motion to label this dog as a potentially dangerous dog based on the history.
It's, it already, Mr. Mayor and Council, it's already been identified as potentially dangerous by law enforcement. And then the process then is it comes, if there's a request for hearing, it comes to the city to hold this hearing and determine if it is dangerous. If it's dangerous, then there's those requirements. You can either have the animal put down or impose those requirements on the individual.
Correct. I've, I've been through these before, and we can pick which ones of the, number two, four, six.
Or you can dismiss the potentially dangerous.
Or we can dismiss it, yes.
If you don't feel there's enough evidence to sustain that. But I know the attorney has some clarifying points for us.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Luck. Mr. Mayor and Council, so I'll just step in and say my understanding of your ordinance for potentially dangerous dogs is that you have combined the dangerous dog under Minnesota statute and potentially dangerous dog kind of at the same level, which is why we need to have a public hearing here for designation of a potentially dangerous dog, but that your decision here today is to either affirm or reject whether or not the dog is potentially dangerous. And you have the same options under both dangerous and potentially dangerous, but just as a point of clarification, it would be a potentially dangerous dog, and you can still apply the conditions that are listed in our code.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll remove my motion for now. And then we're just gonna discuss it and then decide on a motion, right?
Well, first, we, like you said, we gotta either declare it as potentially dangerous or?
Well, no, right now that it has been determined to be a potentially dangerous dog.
Okay.
And so as a, if we follow, there are a couple of ways that this could be done, just in theory, right? The way state law sets out the basics are that a potentially dangerous dog would be considered an administrative determination, nothing more. In East Bethel, and we have the right under state law, but in East Bethel, you have the ability to impose conditions to potentially dangerous dogs. And because of that, we have constitutional protections for the dog owner, which is why we have this public hearing. And so if you affirm that this is a potentially dangerous dog, you can impose conditions just as you could if it was a dangerous dog, but that there are actually two different designations, and today we're just, we're not talking about dangerous dog designations.
So, so right now, because of the incident that by the sheriff has deemed it potentially dangerous and sent that to the city, so right now that's where we're, where we're at.
Correct.
We have the option to keep that potentially dangerous, upgrade it to dangerous, or on the flip side, dismiss it altogether. Those would be the three options.
I don't know on these facts if you have the ability to call it a dangerous dog.
But I'm just saying in theory.
In theory.
Yes.
Well, if we're gonna talk about the state statute as the theoretical baseline, a dog would elevate from potentially dangerous to dangerous if they had another event that happened subsequent thereto. When we look at a single event, we look at the severity of the event, whether an animal was killed is a factor, whether there were multiple dogs can be a factor.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think that this would escalate to that. I'm just saying those would potentially be the three options.
Potentially, yes. Under the East Bethel code, we remain at the potentially dangerous dog level for this determination.
All right, I talked to the owner of the dog that they had to put down because of the injuries, and they did say that this happened a couple of years ago, and that their two dogs had dragged their dog over to their property. That's the one he was talking about. That's the one he was talking about. And they're not here, so I can't, they can't sit here and argue about it. I'm just telling you what they told me. Because these people said that their dog went into their yard a couple of years ago. I'm going to ask them a quick question. Did you pay vet bills a couple of years ago or no? Okay. However, this time they said they do have proof that it was their dogs. They do have five children. Some of them are pretty young, like three years old to 10 years old or something like that. So I'm concerned for the children. I'm, their dogs, it is fenced, but the neighbor told me their dogs dig holes and go under the fence and go into their yard. That is what they told me. So with that, I'm going to, that's all the information I really have right now. But this did happen before. Their dog did attack, these two dogs did attack their dog another time.
And for, are we looking to, do we know which dog did it? There's two dogs.
Both of them.
Both of them were involved?
Yes, both attacked this dog at the same time. They also said this couple washed blood off the dog and brought it back over to them. So I feel like they know it was their dog. Their dogs that did this. And I do want to say I appreciate you taking the steps that you guys have taken with the additional line and enclosure and stuff. That's showing responsibility.
So moving forward, do we want to move on with any stipulations here or how do we want to go through with this?
Well, I'll make a motion that it's potentially dangerous dog and that the main requirement I would like to see is that if the dog is outside, it has to be muzzled. And I'm just concerned for the children, honestly, that, that dog could get up, go under the fence and when a little girl, a little boy, whoever, the youngest one could be by that fence and maybe antagonize the dog, maybe not, but if the dog went over there, I'd be concerned for the children.
So you're looking at condition number five?
Yes. Because they already did the proper enclosure thing.
Yep, that's, that's good. So that was the motion that you made?
Yes.
I will second that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor-
Yeah, I agree with Suzanne saying too, especially when there's kids involved. Different story when there's other animals. But if they have five kids next door, I definitely would agree with what you guys are saying. They should be muzzled or chained or whatever. Because we sure don't want to be dealing with something like this with kids.
And their dogs are escape artists from the, what the neighbors have said to me.
That's all I got.
I, excuse me, I, I do think it's a, it's a very good idea that you bought another enclosure for them within your other enclosure that's covered. And that's a big step. I totally agree with the muzzling outside. Not knowing these dogs, and I'm a dog lover, don't get me wrong, I have two dogs. Sometimes it's tough when it's your dogs to, to deal with something like this. But being responsible in what you're doing, paying, offering to pay the bills and, and putting them on a, a chain when they're outside right now is a huge, is a huge step. We got to protect the residents of this community. And one way to do it is with enforcing some of this stuff. And I think, Susan, you're right, these dogs should be muzzled. Unfortunately, they may not like it, but at least the rest of the city is going to be at ease if you have these animals. And I think that's the right way to go.
Any further discussion? Your turn.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, I heard some discussion about the voluntary measures the, the current dog owners have taken. If you intend for those voluntary measures to be mandatory, then you need to include them as part of your motion. Because if you don't, they could stop doing those things and there'd be nothing wrong with stopping to do those things. So I want to make very clear that you should make the conditions, impose the conditions that you want to see imposed.
So that'd be condition number one, essentially maintain, provide and maintain a proper enclosure for the potentially dangerous dog.
So I'll modify my motion to add number one.
I'll accept that modification.
What about seven? Should they stay up to date on the rabies shots in two?
Yeah. I would think so.
Yeah, I forgot. That's not a requirement that we monitor anymore.
Right.
All right, my motion is for, to include numbers one, five, and seven.
I'll accept that. Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if we, if we can have, since the motion was seconded, it belongs to the body, so the body needs to vote to approve the change to the motion. So procedurally, if, if we take a quick vote to either approve the amendment or decline the amendment, then we can proceed to vote on the actual motion. Once a motion has been seconded, it is no longer Ms. Urkel's motion, it is the council's motion. And it can only be changed by council approval.
Okay.
So simply just call a vote on the amendment.
So call a vote on the amendment? Yep. Call for a vote on the amendment?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
The amendment is adopted.
Amendment-
And now you may vote on the motion as amended.
Amendment, amendment is adopted. Now, all's, we have a hall in favor in the amendment seconded. Hall is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for coming in tonight and doing the right thing and I hope everything works out. I hope there's no more issues. Thank you. Public forum. Mr. Landis.
Good evening. I'm Dave Landis, reside at 1747 237th Avenue Northeast, East Bethel. I, we come to these meetings regularly, as you know, and so I thought maybe it'd be in order to give some comments from the peanut gallery about some issues that I believe are, are still before the council and not, not closed items. Uh, the first one is September 8th, there is a agenda item titled "Successful Completion of Probationary Period by Planner." It was testified that this new hire had, had completed their job requirements with exemplary performance and even above, above and beyond what was expected. And the probationary period apparently is six months as a, as a city, the way the city conducts their employment. However, it was brought up that the person possibly still needed some help of some out-of-the-ordinary items that might come up. But that there was a provision that could take care of that. However, that wasn't good enough and they felt that the person wasn't showing a, a proper completion of the probationary period and that it should be extended. I felt this was rather shocking in that it moves a goalpost when the person obviously has, it's been testified that they're doing the job. And I don't know, other than possibly something like a Walmart greeter, you're never going to have every situation experience that you can call that person totally qualified or able to handle every situation. I thought it was a, really a petty insult to the person and really compliment them for not walking out on you because you really, you really changed the employment in the, you know, during the process. So I, I just wanted to weigh in on that. I, I really, I thought it was pretty sad. The second item is regarding the senior center's proposal for, for serving alcohol at events. This seems like a unnecessary exposure for the city. As stated tonight, when the city is involved with something, they also have to accept a liability for something. And this being a city facility, it opens up the city for something, and then especially expected to pay the cost of it. Doesn't, it doesn't wash. The next item is the BDM situation. This one's, you know, pretty sticky. Most of it happened before we lived here. And so we picked up things here and there about the history of it, which goes back some time. And it started with the city finding themselves in the unenviable position of, of owning a development that had gone defunct. And I would assume it was a, a cost that would be ongoing and they need to find a solution. A solution was found and BDM took it over and paid the city a sum of money for it from what's been testified. And in the process, the city retained ownership of the, of the community center. And there is a contract for BDM to be able to continue using some of the space in it. It was not a well-thought-out contract apparently and didn't cover some items that should have been. But from what I can assume from what's been talked about is it probably was a pretty nice deal for the city. There's been development. The city, I would assume, has collected tax revenue from that and should be cash positive. And it's been, from everything that appears, it's personal. The, the issues that have been brought up are personal. And we've listened to several what I would consider rants and personal outrage about things. And it just, um, it doesn't seem the right way to treat a, a long-time business that has been testified by residents, that they have a good reputation. And yet it appears as though they came out with guns blazing and, and besmirked the company publicly. And so I think that it would be best for the city if you found a way to get around this without litigation. I don't think the cards are in your favor that, with the situation, with the contract.
Please wrap it up, Dave.
Okay. So I would say show some leadership, put your head down, apologize, ask for a meeting and, and reset. And come to an agreement. Show some leadership. It can be done. There's worse situations than this that get, get handled regularly and I don't think it should be beyond what you can accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
Isn't there another person signed up?
They were the-
I thought this gentleman signed up.
He never signed up.
I didn't sign up. I didn't want to.
Oh, I thought I saw him sign up. It's up to you.
Go ahead. You have three minutes. State your name and address.
My name is Arvid Danksenus and I live at 20852 Buchanan Street Northeast. And that's in the Hidden Haven Estates. And they just finished resurfacing our roads there. And I, I stopped in over here one day, but they said I had to file a complaint. And I thought, no, I don't want to do that. But I want to let you know that in the city's newsletter, quite frequently, it states in there that you should not blow your grass or mow your grass into the streets because of the storm sewers and also the pollution factor. And you'd be surprised how many people on the street that I live on blow their grass when they're mowing out into the street and never take the, and don't take the effort to take a blower and blow it back on their yard. And so with the new street and they raised the storm sewers and that, I'm thinking it's, it's not up to me to file a complaint. I think the issue belongs with the city and they should, I don't know, put out a stronger letter or, or come and view it themselves and, and do the complaint from the city, not from a homeowner because I don't want to be the bad guy on the, on the blocks. But, but I think it's, uh, it's, it's an issue that not going to go away unless you do something about it. And putting it in the newsletter is fine, but that's not doing the job. So anyway, that's, that's what I have to say and hope that you can look at the situation and see it from a, not only a, a potential problem with the storm sewers, but also property valuations and everything else. So, anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I would like to pull item G as in goat.
I want to pull one. Not on the page. I want to pull C, the fire department copier. And I'll second that motion.
Any others to be pulled? Got a motion and a second. All those of, all those in favor of the amended consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Item, item C.
I just have a question. I am wondering if the new lease for the copier is higher or lower than, I'm sure it's a little bit higher because of inflation, but, or was, was there even-
We did, yeah.
-a payment on it before?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, we did not, we owned that one prior, so-
Okay.
It had long-served its time over there. It was not functioning properly and they were trying to get along with it. But, but this will be a lease agreement on this one, so.
Okay, and I agree with the problems described. It definitely needed to be. What happens with the old one?
I'm assuming the lease company, when they drop off, the new one will take the old one. There might be a disposal fee of some sort, but it might be included in the lease. I don't know if you've-
Okay.
Ours is to do what we want. We own it, so.
Hopefully they'll take it.
Yeah, disposing of those is-
Right.
Tricky.
Can you roll it over to the recycling center?
Not a fine state, probably.
That's all I have. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those favor?
Aye.
Item G.
I pulled this to abstain from voting on this item.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve item-
G.
G.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Motion to pass.
Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, not a whole lot, just, just a reminder this evening, for tomorrow, it's the Sand Hill Parkway Townhome Open House on the 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., so, I think they've asked for a presence of the city there, so if council members, mayor yourself, if you wanna go there, I'm sure there'll be constituents you can chat with.
What time?
What's that, 4:00 to 6:00?
4:00 to 6:00?
4:00 to 6:00 p.m., so, I'm sure they'll be giving tours over there, if residents are will, are interested in seeing that project, and, and walking through some of the open houses that would be available during that time, so, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
I just wanna comment, the Chambers is calling it a ribbon cutting, and it's planning on being there with, so there'll be multiple other businesses there too.
All right, council reports.
I have a couple of things. The first thing I wanna say is, I think it's time to end our contract with land form completely, so I think that needs to come up on the next agenda. I'm not gonna make a motion to do it here, I think it should be an agenda item. The second thing I wanna talk about is the seniors, they are having a senior dance on the 31st, and I think everybody's invited, and it's costume, and there's, if people come in costume, there'll be, it'll be a costume contest, but right after that, there's going to be a trunk or treat out here, so I've, I've already talked to the fire department and invited them to come up, and hopefully they'll have something to give out, and I'd love to see the city council, the planning commission, everybody, the seniors will be there, the lions will probably be there. I might bring it up at the ribbon cutting tomorrow, and see if any of the business owners wanna participate. And on October 25th, we are still having that craft and vendor sale over here, we've got at least 20 vendors, some kids are coming, so that'll be fun, so I'm gonna bring that up every meeting, just to keep people reminded. I did wanna bring up the town hall, because I mentioned to Matt in an email that there, I'd like to see more displays of, from the city, from the development, I'd like to see some of the developers here with displays of their planned unit developments, these are the things the residents have called and asked me to have there, they think that Department of Transportation should be there to fill in what's going on with 65, to update on that. Maybe some of the, if any of the businesses, maybe Elevage can come, I'd, I might have a table for the seniors, so maybe like a recruiting table, 'cause membership is declining over there, Booster Days could be there, they could be recruiting people, parks can be there, showing what's going on with the parks, maybe even a map with all of our parks, or a display. And the other thing I had is, the city, the seniors last week had a staff appreciation, and it was fun, it was a potluck, the seniors all did a lot of cooking, and appreciated, Matt came and spoke and gave an update, the seniors, to be a member, you only have to be 55, you don't have to be 65, so, just so people know, that if you're 55, you can become a member, you can participate, you don't have to come to every meeting. And that's all I have.
What was the date and time for the truck or treat?
October 31st, it'll start at 4:30, from like 4:30 to 6:00, or maybe 4:30 to 6:30, depending on how long, how it goes.
So, 4:30 to 6:30?
Yeah.
All right.
I agree with what Suzanne is saying about the town hall, 'cause our last few town hall meetings, really, there hasn't been anything even over in the senior center. I can remember years ago that they'd have maps of what's going on in our city, and right now, nobody knows about everything that goes on, so it's a good idea, I think, if staff can do that, that would make a good town hall meeting. That's it.
And I'll be, I can invite some people, some businesses, and Airport Commission, and the Young Eagles people would like, might like to come up here, 'cause they're all looking for members and wanna give out information of what they have going on, especially macnoms.com, because I still see posts, what was that airplane doing, and if you go to macnom, macnoms.com, it tells, it gives you real-time flights going out, and you could click on the airplane, and it'll tell you where it's from and where it's going, and that kind of thing. That's all.
Okay, earlier this month, I attended and participated in the East Bethel Chamber Converse Golf Tournament, lost a lot of balls, but it was a good time, they had the biggest amount of teams they've had, 23, they brought in somewhere over $12,000, and that'll get donated back to different things throughout the city. I wanna give a shout-out to Brad and the Chamber, and also the golf committee for their continued emphasis on showing the city off, as they do, and it was a good time.
Which golf course was that at? Which golf course was that on?
It was at the Refuge this year.
Refuge, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.